18th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Mayor Kulias.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kulianis.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Di Donato.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
We have a few announcements tonight. Tonight we have Attorney Lenatzis, who will be our city attorney tonight from Eunice Salzman and Jensen, PA. We also will be moving Item 18 up, Resolution 2025-14, Final Subdivision Plot for North Lake Estates Subdivision, Application 24-37. This is a quasi judicial hearing. We will be moving that after the consent agenda items. And so with that, tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Snare Chaplain at St. Timothy's Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Lord be with you. Most high God, we thank you for this city. It's your city. Thank you for allowing us to be here. And we pray that you would help us to be good stewards and managers of all that you have given us. Be with all those who live and work and play here. Be with all those who are in need, those still recovering from the hurricane. We ask for your relief and your intervention. And Lord, we pray that you would be with these people that you have called to lead our city. Give them your wisdom and counsel that they might guide us in a way that brings glory to you. We ask all of this in the name of the Most High, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. What allegiance to the flag? United States of America, a great republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to a special presentation, and that is the Peace Pole Tarpon Springs, or Peace for Tarpon and the Tarpon Springs Rotary. And this will be presented by Robin Sanger, Peace for Tarpon, and Susan Carson of the Tarpon Springs Rotary Club. Sue, do you want to see if the, your light on, just the microphone? Perfect.
Sorry.
No.
A peace pole is an internationally recognized symbol of hope and dreams of the entire human family, sending vigilant and silent prayer for peace on earth. The Peace Pole Project was started in Japan by Mashia Goi, who dedicated his life to spreading the message, "May peace prevail on earth." Mr. Goi was greatly affected by the destruction caused by World War II and the atomic bombs which fell on the city of Hiroshima and Nagasaki.
And right now, there are over 250,000 peace poles around the world in 180 countries. And it's a symbol of peace that is visible in the community, which is a very powerful thing. So basically, it's spreading visual peace throughout these 180 countries. The first one was actually in 1955, so they've been around quite a while. They serve as a constant reminder for us to visualize and pray for peace. The Rotary Clubs in Dunedin are inviting participants to their peace pole location at 1920 Pinehurst Road for their fourth annual peace pole event on Wednesday tomorrow. And this is the one they're going to be celebrating. There are three peace poles in Dunedin altogether, plus they're bringing into the library as well. So here's a flyer for the event tomorrow. You can see all the sponsors who will be joining them.
So the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs and Peace for Tarpon are asking for permission to move forward in the planning of placing a peace pole in the Live Oaks Recreational Complex. Both organizations have dedicated some seed money to this project. We are also hoping for the Garden Club and other interested locals to participate. We also have Eddie Hoffman, who's in our Rotary Club, who will help in designing the plan, the location.
And I'm a member of the Tarpon Springs Garden Club, and they're also interested in participating with plantings. And that's pretty much it. This is something we've been working on here for several years. And Peace for Tarpon has been interested. Rotary has been very interested. And I think, hopefully, this is the time. We had several meetings with Mark Lacouris to find a suitable spot, and I think we found a really good one. And now it's just a matter of getting y'all's blessing for that. We were moving forward with it this fall when the hurricanes happened, transitioning new city manager. And Mark said, "Let's just wait till Mr. Rudd's in place before we finalize this." So that's why this is happening now.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Sanger. I think it sounds like a great idea. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission for the presentation? Okay. Any public comments on the special presentation? I, yes.
Denise Manino, 470 Cypress Street, Tarpon. I would say that let peace begin with me. And I agree that we need something like this. There's a lot of moments in the community where our differences have risen to a lot of heated words that are probably not meant, but that happens. And I would say that this is something that would give us a focal point of hope that is so vitally needed right now on our planet, and unity and harmony. So I would hope that this happens. I visualize it. I've talked to Robin about it in the past, and I think it's a dream. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Pardon me. What Ms. Manino said, this would be a type of place where people could gather for the small commitment ceremony or to remember a loved one who has passed. So this is more of a place for people to be and experience peace in a natural setting.
Sure. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
And we do have a raised hand for all the first person. And please state your name and address for the record.
Savannah Day, 413 East Oakwood Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I totally support the peace pole. I'm also supporting different other locations for the peace pole to bring peace within our community. So I hope the commission do welcome this as a now joining hands and unity and hope in our community.
Thank you.
And we do not have any other raised hands.
Thank you, IT. Commissioner Banther, your light is on?
Yes, thank you. I just want to know what they all need from us to get started as far as, you know, is it on city property? Or what do you need from us?
Yes. The site that we determined would be most likely is by the dog park.
Okay.
At the overlooking the Anclot River, there's a large field off to the left and just a small space there with a bench, some plantings, and the peace pole.
Okay. Well, I would look to Rudd as far as what, you know, they need from us to go forward, so.
I would like to get a vote just to proceed to approve the request and proceed with the installation.
You want to call for a motion?
Sure. I just like, put it in a spot like this.
May I add one?
Go ahead.
So the city of Dunedin takes care of this, the mowing and stuff like that. So just so you're aware of that.
I'm sure.
That would be another request.
Absolutely, yeah. Just, it seems like you have a good location already. I just hope a lot of, especially the young children in the area too, get to see it. And this is a good piece for unity and absolutely supportive. So the chair will entertain a motion to let staff and Rotary and Peace for Tarpon move forward with the peace pole Tarpon Springs. Item one.
No move.
Second.
Okay. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes. We will now go to public comments on items that will not be discussed on tonight's agenda. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will be given four minutes to speak and two minutes to speak if you are on Zoom. Are there any public comments?
Robin Sanger, 1630 Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpon Springs. I am here to thank everyone who participated in stone soup, including Mayor Kulias was there. I hope you enjoyed soup. You ducked out. You must have gotten it to go. When I came back in, I was running around. You'd already left, but appreciate that. Several people were mentioned that you showed up and we're very happy to meet you. And also Vice Mayor Kulianis, you were there as well, and you brought your lovely wife and some friends. It was a great community event. It raised us a little bit of money for the Historical Society and Peace for Tarpon. This is our big fundraiser. So it's very low key. The main purpose of it is community building. And it was wonderful to see people enjoying sitting out on the back platform. And someone said, "I feel like I'm in France. I'm in Paris, sitting outside." And it's like, well, good. So it'll be next year, in February as well. We appreciate National Bakery and all the restaurants who participated. And it was just a very positive, wonderful event. So thank y'all for your support in it. And we'll see you next year in February.
Thank you. No, I appreciate you all hosting it. And I had the chicken tortilla and the stuffed pepper soup, and they were both amazing.
Oh, that was, well, the one was from Tula, Chef Vincenzo.
Okay.
And then the other one was Chef Adam at Bayou Cafe.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Couple things. First off, I've driven by the new pickleball courts a few times over the last couple of weeks. And they're being quite used, and they're being enjoyed. And even though I had some concerns about the potential impact there, I think that's a perfect spot. It fits with the thing. And it also, I think also augments what the Peace for Tarpon Group is mentioning about community and putting things in an area where you can have more sociability. I want to follow up on something I spoke about last time, about our home situation. And I want to thank George and George for, even though I have concerns about what's going on there, you'll hear why I'm speaking about this. And you're putting in single-family homes for people to own, okay?
Mr. Delakis, face the chair. Speak to me.
But I wanted them to be aware of something. So as I spoke about last week about the situation that's happening with our housing system, I spoke about the Tampa Bay Times article about all these corporations owning houses that are taken off the market. I also spoke to you about the tax deeds. And here, this is the last Business Observer. We've got YSL RTL LLC. Let's see, they got one, two. Then we got Vinan Holdings, Florida Tax Lean LLC, JPL Investments Corp., Clearleaf Short. And as I mentioned the one last week out of California that owns 20,000. But why do I want to highlight that? That's more houses taken off the market by corporate entities that basically hold them to rent them out. Business Observer this past week, article on page six, On Point, states with the most built-to-rent units in the pipeline. Nearly 14,000 built-to-rent homes are under construction in Florida. Corporations all over, D.R. Horton, all these guys, they're buying property. Look, you can get a free subscription. Please, order it. Just when you fill it in, you just say government. There's a box for it. All these houses that are being built for rent. And what was been the American dream? To own a house. And what's one of the best ways to have wealth buildment? Is land and property and a house. When you have rent to build communities, people don't have an ownership stake. They're renters. They don't care if something happens. And then on the corporate side, your water heater's leaking, eh, maybe I'll get to it. The roof is leaking, eh, all right. I don't know what you can do, but I just want you to be aware. So if these type of businesses come into Tarpon, we can maybe add some kind of restrictions in our land code to restrict to homeownership. I know we're getting, you know, apartments and things of that nature. Again, that doesn't satisfy homeownership. But just want you to be aware of the situation that's going on that's affecting our residents and our fellow Floridians. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments?
Mayor Commissioners, Chaplain Milton Smith, 1511 Seesbury, Dunedin. I speak on for the Tarpon Springs Rotary Club and offer sponsors matter. Just wanted to thank you for your support for the Finest for First Spotters Car Show that happened on Saturday. There was a lot of folks there lining the streets of Tarpon Springs. I know not everybody's always happy because of the crowds there, but hopefully it brought some commerce into the city and the residents got a chance to enjoy the car show. I appreciate the support from the Police Department, the Fire Department, and all the city staff. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We will now go to consent agenda items. Item two, Special Events. Two A, Taste of Tarpon, May 17th and October 18th, 2025. Two B, 34th Annual Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Festival, 2025. Two C, St. Nicholas Cathedral Procession, 2025. Two D, Tarpon Springs Rotary Triathlon, 2025. Three, Attorney Fees. Three A, Eunice Salzman, Jensen, PA, invoice 84726. Three B, Dickman Law Firm, Statement Number Four. Item four, Award File Number 250119-N-AS, Public Safety Health Screenings. Item five, Award File Number 250118-C-AS, Trash Receptacles and Lids. Item six, Extend File Number 190049-P-CM, Video Surveillance System. Commissioners, are there any agenda items that you would like to pull? Seeing none. Are there any public comments on consent agenda items two A through six? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items two through six.
No move.
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes. We will now go to ordinance resolutions on Item 18, which is Resolution 2025-14, Final Subdivision Plot for North Lake Estates Subdivision, Application 24-37. And this is a quasi judicial procedure. City Attorney, can you please read the title and then go over the quasi judicial process?
2025-14, Approving the North Lake Estates Final Subdivision Plot, Application 24-37, Accepting All Offers of Dedication as Described in Said Plot, Authorizing the Appropriate City Officials to Certify Approval Thereon and Providing for an Effective Date. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather apply the law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinance in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Additionally, the board members must disclose any ex parte research or communication, including emails, discussions beforehand, inspections of the property, or independent research beyond what is in the public packet. A board of commission member with a conflict may need to abstain as well.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any ex parte communications between any of the board members and the applicant? Okay. Other than a text message requesting that the item be brought up forward moments earlier before the meeting, that was the only communication I had. So just clarify that. So with that said, we're now going to swear everyone in because everyone who's going to participate in this hearing, please stand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And now we are going to city staff presentation. Ms. Pat McNeese, Planning Director.
Thank you. Pat McNeese, Planning Supervisor, standing in for Renee Vincent this evening. What we have before you this evening is a final plat for the North Lake Estates Subdivision. This is a 44 lot subdivision under the ownership of GGR Holdings, represented by Mr. George Stamis. The applicants are here this evening. This is 444 lots of single-family detached homes. The streets will be dedicated to the public, so that will be city maintenance for the streets. The water and sewer is provided by Pinellas County Utilities. The stormwater system will be managed by the Homeowners Association with the in-street components maintained by the city. And the city does have access, emergency access easements to the stormwater system for, if those are needed. The HOA will also maintain the wetland mitigation creation that's being done on-site. So the project is currently under construction. That is proceeding, but it is not complete. The applicants would like to plat at this time. They have provided two irrevocable standby letters of credit for the remaining improvements. That's for infrastructure and for, to complete the mitigation. So there's about over half million dollars with a 25% contingency posted. And staff is recommending approval of the final plat. I should say, this property and project is the subject of an active development agreement. That was included in your packet. And the applicants and the city are basically up to date in compliance with the terms of that agreement. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. McNeese. Are there any questions from the board for staff? Does the applicant have any questions for staff? Thank you. Staff, do you now present the, submit your presentation to the record?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now go to the applicant's presentation.
George Stamis, representing GGR Holdings One LLC, we're the developers. The project's going to be beautiful. It's coming along nicely. We're going to build large homes, you know, good-sized homes on real large lots, something that Pinellas County doesn't really have very many of available. And I think the community's going to be very proud of the community in the end. That's my presentation.
Thank you. Just one second, Mr. Stamis. Does the board members have any questions for the applicant? Does the Board members have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir. Now, we're not going to go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this application?
Peter Lakkas, five one four Ashland Avenue. Final plat pretty much is basically a formality. Train's already left the station on this. The only thing I would bring up, as Pat mentioned, the development agreement. So if you go back and look at number ten of the conditions, there's a lot of things in there with wetland mitigation and tree mitigation and enhancement plans and things of that nature. So being that part of the development agreement is that the city takes responsibility for maintaining some of the areas around the stormwater. If you read, there's things about the grading and all that stuff. And then, as you heard Pat mention, the roads are going to be turned over to things about easements and right of ways. So I'm not sure if, since the county's going to be providing water and sewer, if that's going to be a city responsibility. And then we have the roads, so just like maybe take a look to make sure there's good clarification on who's responsible for what as this project proceeds, that inspections are maintained. And then lastly, as it was mentioned, the stormwater management is going to be over to the HOA. And as you're familiar, or maybe not, but with HOAs and condominiums associations, a lot of times now with the new laws, they have higher reserve requirements. So I would just recommend that in their homeowners association, there's some make sure there's requisite reserve requirements for any maintenance that the city could be subsequently responsible for maintenance. But otherwise, even though I have concerns about, you know, the environmental aspect, I will trust that Mr. Stammas and Mr. Zoots, knowing that they are people who appreciates, you know, the waterways and the earth, will do the best they can to preserve as much that's available to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakos. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no attendees at this time.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make any closing arguments or statements? Thank you. We're now going to go to Board deliberation. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve item eighteen, resolution two zero two five dash one four, final subdivision plat for North Lake Estates subdivision, application two four dash three seven.
I'll move.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to business items, formerly known as special consent. We are on to item seven, which is discussion of award file number two five zero one one seven dash C dash P H Security Guard Services versus employing a guard. And we have a city manager to present?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is the, normally the renewal of a three-year contract for the security for the front door guard. And Tom has, Tom's been a great asset to the city and he's made a request to work for the city. Ron did an analysis. There is a slight savings by doing that. The other side is that currently if Tom is out, the agency would send a replacement to fill that position. So we would take that on. But Tom's really wants to express an interest to stay with the city till his retirement. And I think he's been, done a tremendous job at the front door and I would support his request.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any public comments on this item? I know these are positive comments, Mr. Delakos.
I try to make the other ones positive.
You do, you do.
So Peter Lakkas, five fourteen Ashland Avenue. I'm really glad this has finally come up. Because over the years, I've also spoken to Tom about his situation. And it makes sense. If you look at the police budget, we pay for pool crossing guards. They're basically under the Police Department. And the security of the front doors, sort of like a semi-police department function. So I would say, as far as administratively, you put it under the Police Department. And I don't see if there's a reason that he's not there for either a doctor's appointment or if he has to leave early that we couldn't have an officer come to fill in the gap for a few hours or a day. And Tom, he has a good personality for someone at the front door. That's the first person that people see when they come into Tarpon. And he's always friendly. He's always jovial. He's always helpful. You can't replace that, even if you, I've come a couple of times when we've had the replacement guard and they're just sitting there. Who you want to see? Okay, I'll call him down. Tom, he engages you in conversation, you know, he's just, so that's, that's part of what the value Tom brings. And you do save money. In fact, if I remember, you're quoting him sixteen, I'd say move him up to eighteen. Because you're still saving money, because even if you're with a contract service, they're still going to find a way to add other fees in. So I would highly recommend that unanimously accept Tom as a fellow city employee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no attendees at this time.
Thank you. We got Commissioner Banther's light was on first?
Yes, thank you. Rudd, so this would be, he's currently with Allied Universal, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this would be bringing him on over here. Would his pay stay the same?
No, I think he's,
I mean, I mean, if we take him on, you know, internally as opposed to the Guard Service.
I think we have a higher rate we would pay him at than what they do.
But he would be getting more money that way because we're paying. They're taking out like a management fee. I know the communities that we manage would like secure toss. That's how it is, right? They, they get a fraction of the money that we actually pay. Okay, I'm in favor of this if you think that the numbers work out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I have another question. Did you have anybody in mind for who would be the replacement? Should he be sick or anything like that as of this point?
No, I didn't. It would be up to his supervisor.
Okay.
And in the past, we've had some of the, it's been facilities maintenance guys, right, that have filled in? He's currently part of facilities maintenance.
So this would fall under Public Works?
Public Works.
Okay. The other thing is, I did want to make a comment. I'm thrilled that he would be coming on to us because when we've had fill-ins, they don't know the system. And I'd rather have somebody within who knows the system that we have here rather than having transients where they could be misleading innocently. So I'd rather have either somebody or have Public Works put someone in also that knows the system. We should have backup for everything that we do any which way. So I appreciate the fact that he's willing to come upon us. And he is a sweetheart of a guy, as been said. So he's always very friendly to everyone that comes in. He greets everyone. He knows the system backwards and forwards, so I'm also for this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments?
I did forget the one question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, all right. Did we make sure he doesn't have a non-compete with Allied, meaning like we can't? Sorry?
Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Yes, we did look over the contract today to make sure that there was nothing of that sort in there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. No, I'm happy to support this item. I see, you know, being in the temp industry, it's, as an employee who's been really a temporary employee for seven, eight years, it's the benefits. And he's a very dedicated man. I've talked to a lot of staff personnel inside. Cares about the city. He will be getting a two-dollar raise. Also will be getting benefits that he's not currently getting that the city provides out what will be an interest. And necessarily, you know, there's, with that situation, I, he calls out or there's another, you know, sick, there's plenty of guys and I can name a list of them that could probably fill in for the day or two if needed. And so, you know, we got, got Nick Gerakis, we got, you know, maybe Mr. Swan or Mick Papa, or, you know, there's several many other guys, or Mike Switz. So there's a lot of people that I think could fill in if needed, you know, just for the day or two. And I think this goes towards a goodwill of employing a good staff member who, no matter what, is the face of Tarpon Springs City Hall. You walk in that door, that's the first person you see and he greets everyone with a smile. So I'm happy to move forward with with this item. And if there are no further comments, the Chair will make a motion to approve or to, the Chair will make a motion for a city manager and staff to hire the security guard permanently. Yeah, the, yes. Make a motion, entertain a motion are two different things, so excuse me. The Chair will entertain a motion to have the city manager and staff hire the security guard.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Colianis?
Yes.
Yes. Welcome to the team, Tom. Item eight, award file number two five zero 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 three dash P dash A S, Employee Benefits Brokerage and Consulting Services. And we have Human Resource Director Jane Niffen and Procurement Director Janina Lewis to present the item.
Good evening again, Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. I'll be filling in for Jane, who is out this, today. Basically, this is the staff recommendation to award the Employee Benefits Brokerage and Consulting Services to R S C Insurance Brokerage, Doing Business as Risk Strategies Company, otherwise known as the Garing Group. Effective, this will be a five-year contract, so effective June third, twenty twenty five through June second, twenty thirty. The total estimated amount for the five years is six hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred. The purpose of this contract is to compete and provide comprehensive employee benefits, brokerage, and consulting services for the city. The scope of these services include group health insurance, dental insurance, employee wellness center, as well as other wellness initiatives, and group slash life, long-term disability insurances. Additionally, these services help keep the city compliant with legal requirements and act as a liaison or city advocate with insurance companies. They provide training workshops and they assist city staff with online benefits enrollment. The subject proposal was issued and we received four submittals. An evaluation committee comprised of department representatives evaluated the submittals. Out of the, out of the four, Garing Group was ranked the highest overall. And now we are presenting that to the commission for your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no attendees at this time.
Thank you. Back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Eisner?
Well, this is more of a comment. It's not a question. I've dealt with Garing Group numerous times. They've been extremely helpful, much more than United has been. So I am all for them continuing to help us. They've just been super, really nice, so that's all. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Commissioner. There are no further comments. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve item eighteen, award file number two five zero zero three dash P dash A S, Employee Benefits Brokerage and Consulting Services.
So moved.
Second. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine, renew file number two three zero two one four dash C dash A S, pipelining and rehabilitation services. And we have Public Services Director Tommy Keiger and Utility Superintendent Ray Page.
Thank you, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. This is an annual renewal for our cured-in-place pipelining contract. We utilize this contract for lining of the sanitary sewer system, particularly aging clay, gravity sewer lines. We've, excuse me, this is an annual program. Our goal is to line about three hundred thousand dollars annually in, in clay sewer lines, which will result in an end goal of lining seventy percent of the city's clay sewer pipes over the next twenty years. And we've also included a small contingency for as-needed repairs or things like that as we work through our planned projects. We want to make sure that we're hitting our targets for long-term renewal, but also have a little bit held back just in case there's an emergency and we need to do an as-needed repair at the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no attendees at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner, your light is on?
I just quickly wanted you to explain the cost savings to the residents of when you reline versus replace.
Oh, absolutely. The cost of doing cured-in-place pipelining, it's a trenchless technology, which means you don't have to dig up streets, you don't have to restore asphalt, you don't have to disrupt neighborhoods. You're sort of in and out in a matter of a few days. A truck parks over a manhole and it inflates the liner and then they cure it in place in the next couple of days. And there's a tremendous savings on construction costs and also on impacts to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions from the commission, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, renew, award renew file number two three zero two one four dash C dash A S.
I'll move.
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item ten, increase file number two two zero one four two dash B dash J L, tree removal and related services. And we have Procurement Director Janina Lewis?
Good evening again, Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. I'm looking at the tree increase. So basically, this is a request to increase the services for the tree removal and related services that are not within the pre, sorry, the pre-established contracts that we have for emergencies. This is our regular tree trimming service. So due to the storm and the debris, we are requesting an increase based on the fact that not only is he assisting with the tree limbs around the city that went down that were not part of the debris removal pickup, but also his regular services. And that has eaten up a lot of the contract budget that we initially had anticipated for storm-related items.
Sure. No, thank you for clarifying, Ms. Lewis. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner, your light is on?
Yes. Just quickly, is this a FEMA reimbursement?
Some of it is, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew that it was a FEMA reimbursement, you know, reimbursement. Because some of it is due to storms, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments from the commission, the Chair will entertain a motion to increase file number two two zero one four two dash B dash J L.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Next, we have item eleven, which is audit of the Public Works Sanitation Division, number zero nine underscore two zero two five. And we have City Internal Auditor Billy Pullos for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Place on the agenda, audit number zero nine, twenty twenty five, the audit of the sanitation department. I'll just go through the findings quickly. The findings, there's seven findings and three observations. Seven findings obviously being more negative in nature and observations being more positive in nature. One finding related to the, the, well, sanitation, you have public works sanitation, then two separate sections. You have solid waste and then you have the yard waste facility. Those are the two areas I focused on. The first finding, number one, is the division manages a solid waste management contract effectively, but could benefit from a more modern approach in order to gather data that can be used in future planning and contract negotiations. Basically, what they do now is they're more of a, the solid waste section monitors the solid waste contract and they act as a liaison between the people and, and solid waste. And the only thing there is it's a little arcane the way they do it. They do it through the email system and kind of a pen and paper system. So it was just, the only recommendation there would be to put it on some sort of, maybe an Excel spreadsheet or something, so you could actually capture data that otherwise would be very difficult to do. So that's, and they're already in the process of doing that. The second finding, and this relates to both the yard waste facility and the solid waste sections. And that's that they don't have a comprehensive set of policies and procedures, or standard operating procedures and policies. But they do, they do have some in draft form. I've reviewed some of them and, you know, they're on, they're on the right track. And those should be done probably within the next six months or so. The rest of the findings relate to just, just the yard waste facility. Finding number three, the yard waste facility has experienced, and this, this finding too, just so you know, and I put it in the, in the report, I noted it. It's, it's not really a finding as in, as in it's someone's fault or anything like that. It's more of an informational finding, so the board's aware of, you know, how we got here and maybe start a discussion, not tonight, of course, but a discussion on, on what can be done about it. I'll explain to you. The yard waste facility has experienced a sharp increase in yard waste disposal costs due to a new vendor contract executed in twenty-three, FY twenty-three, which is negatively affecting the net revenue and overall yard waste intake. So it's pretty simple. When the yard waste facility, people come in, they dump the yard waste off, we charge them, and then we have to pay a company to ultimately take that yard waste out. And for years, it was around twenty-one dollars a ton. We signed a new contract in twenty-three and it went from twenty-one dollars a ton to sixty-four dollars and, and change, so about forty-three dollar difference. And it may not seem like a lot on its face, but if you just do like quick and dirty math, we do about nine thousand tons a year. So for every dollar increase in the, in the, in the contract and the disposal cost, comes out to about nine thousand dollars a year. So if we do, you know, say ten thousand or nine thousand, you're talking So if we do, you know, say 10,000 or 9,000, you're talking, you know, nine, every dollar is nine or 10,000. So you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in increased costs on the expense side. So after we sign it, and there's a lot of different reasons, and I talk about them in the, in the report as to why that there was such a big price increase from one year to the other, going from 21 to 60, 64 is a pretty big shock. There's been some consolidation in the industry. Diesel prices were, were, are obviously extremely high and, and some other factors. And there's more competition too from, from both the private and public sector landfills. So basically, what, what you had happen is prices went up and then we adjusted our prices to reflect that, clawback some of the, some of the, some of the expenses. But the effect of that, and it had to be done, obviously, when you're paying $21 a ton, you go to $64 a ton and now it's at 66 with the CPI adjustment for this year. You have to, you have to increase prices so you can obviously clawback some of your money. But the, the, the net effect of that is the yard waste facility is seeing less business. The, and if you look at charts, number one and two on pages seven and eight respectively, it shows that the amount of yard waste collected has almost halved, it's fallen, fallen by a half from 2023 to 2024. So it's, it's just, it's, it's just a crummy situation for the city to be in. And I just wanted to kind of bring it to the forefront so you all have more information when you ultimately do discuss this, give you some, some background on it. Instead of, you know, starting off at block one, you're at block three or four to make, to make, to make a, make a decision. And there's any number of things you can do. I didn't go too far into the recommendations because it would, I could write 100 pages on recommendations for this because there's some, you can do absolutely nothing, you know, and just keep the status quo and subsidize the yard waste facility with solid waste dollars. You can, that's one end of the spectrum. The other end is you can, you can just not provide the service at all and outsource it to the private sector. Apparently that was done years ago, it's my understanding. And I'm not advocating for any, any, any one of those. And there's a bunch of, bunch of different options in between. I think, I think the, the Public Works Director is going to try to maybe renegotiate the contract to bring those costs down. But as you can see though, in, in the, the charts, you can see the net revenue has shrunk tremendously and overall the yard waste facility is, you know, is losing money. And the big driver for that is the, is the yard waste debris disposal fees that we're, that we're paying. But like I said, that was just more for informational purposes. Like I said, they're, they're currently working on that. Number four, finding number four. The yard waste disposal contract was not approved as to form and correctness by the city attorney, which is required by city ordinance. This isn't, this isn't an issue for the city attorney per se. It's, they can only do what, what's put in front of them. I think this is the third time I've mentioned this and it's, it's an easy fix. Like a lot of these things are easy fixes. To simply, ordinance says all the contracts have to be reviewed by a city attorney. Simple as that. So I know the solid waste contract was, the yard waste debris removal, removal contract wasn't. So that's like I said, it's a simple fix. All contracts need to go to the city attorney and done. All right. The next, the next ones have to do with more kind of standard wonky type, you know, audit accounting stuff. The yard, number five, the yard waste facility's limited payment options are affecting its revenue. Currently, they, they only accept cash and check. And these aren't, these aren't, there's some small transactions, maybe 20, $50, stuff like that. But a lot of these are seven, eight, $900 transactions. And not a lot of people carry that much cash and almost certainly no one carries a checkbook, except maybe my mom. I was the only person I know who carries a checkbook with her. But so, so, so the recommendation is just to simply start accepting credit cards. And, and you'll see as I go through the next couple, you'll see why, why accepting credit cards would, would kind of almost mitigate, or would mitigate the next two findings. And, and also too, just to give you kind of a perspective on, on the, the breakdown, the actual cash versus checks, it's about 75, 25 cash compared to checks. That's a lot of cash that the department is handling. There is, there is a credit account. If you're a, a repeat customer, if you own a small business, you can apply for a credit card, but, or not a credit card, a credit account and you're billed monthly. But most people that are going to the yard waste facility aren't frequent customers of the yard waste facility, obviously. So the number six, as I was looking through, kind of parsing through the data, I found that there's quite a few customers who are driving off and refusing to pay and that resulted in lost revenues for the division. So on one side, we have increased, increased costs on the expense side. And then you have people that are simply just not paying, they're refusing to pay or driving off. So obviously I asked, you know, well, why is this happening? And, and it comes back to the payments. Some people just, obviously they don't have that, that much cash with them or they don't, they, they don't have their checkbook with them or they just simply can't afford it. So again, going back to the previous, to the previous finding, if you have a credit card system in place, it would, you could, you can maybe do a hold on their credit card or something like that. Kind of like when you go to a hotel and you, you drink a little liquor bottles, they charge you for those. You could do the same thing here. You know, you, you, you put a hold on their credit card and you tell them, hey, look, whatever you, whatever yard waste you drop off, we're going to charge your credit card. Because what, what's happening now is people, and you have to, you have to give your license, and that's supposed to be a deterrent, kind of a control so people don't drive off. But people have kind of figured out how to game the system and they know they can go to the tax collector's office down the road and spend $34 and get a, get a replacement license. So it's, if you have a $700 bill at the, at the yard waste facility and, all right, do I want to pay that? Or do I want to go spend $34 and take 15 minutes of my time and go to the tax collector's office and get a new license? Well, a lot of people are doing that and we're losing, we're losing money because of it. And it's, it's, it's a double hit to, to the, to the city because it's not only, it's, it's not only lost revenue, it's also whatever someone drops off at the yard waste facility, the city has to pay for. We have to pay to get that, to get that, that, that yard waste removed. So we lose out on the revenue and then the expense is still there. So it's a double hit for the city on, on both sides of the ledger. Then one more finding. Controls over voided transactions are insufficient to safeguard the city's assets and protect employees. This is just, just a lack of transactional controls. And again, it's, it, and all these are pretty easy, are easy to fix. So you have employees that have the authority to unilaterally void transactions or adjust a ticket and there's no, as it stands now, there's no supervisory review. And from an audit perspective, that's, that's, you know, that's opening the door for bad things to happen, especially when you're, when you're dealing with so much cash, cash transactions. You can have an employee literally voiding out a transaction and it's a cash transaction. I mean, you can connect the dots, bad things could happen. I'm not saying bad things are happening, but it's an opportunity and you always want to, if you can, prevent the controls in place so no one has the opportunity to even do that. And it's not only to protect the city's assets, but to protect the, the employees as well. As it stands now, if you were to accuse an employee of some inappropriate behavior, there's not a lot really they could even do about it because there's no controls in place. And when you're talking cash, there's not a real, there's not a real big trail there, sort of an audit trail. So it's, it's hard to prove something one way or the other. So if you can avoid those situations, obviously you want to avoid them. And taking credit cards is a good way to, to do that as well. The less, the less cash we have in people's hands and if you have supervisor review over voided transactions, the better off you'll be from a control perspective. Those are it for the findings. There were three observations. I'll just, I'll just go with the first one because I was really impressed with this. The division has been proactive and effective in the disaster recovery efforts for the city. Basically, in, in March of 23, they signed a contract with a, with a company named Crowder Golf. And it's, it's, they're a debris, emergency debris removal company. And it's sort of a standby contract, so you hope you never really have to use it. But after the hurricanes that we had, the contract's already in place, so you don't have to go through the procurement process. You know, dirt, you know, right after an emergency, the prices are already set. So it was simple as, you know, pick up the phone and, and get them over here. And Tarpon was one of the first cities in the entire Bay Area to be cleaned up and, and ready to go. So I wanted to, I wanted to point out that because I thought, when I first read the contract, I was like, who knows if we'll ever use this? And then you actually see it right away, put the use, and I thought, I thought, I thought that was great and they should be, they should be applauded for that. Then there was a couple other observations as well. They've taken advantage of some grants with Pinellas County and have received about $37,000 over the last two years. So anytime you can get someone else's money, that's, that's always a good thing. And then the division does work with the clerk's office to help ensure separation of duties with regards to cash and record keeper controls. Now, these are a little different than the controls I spoke about earlier. Those are more transactional, these are post-transactional. And it's, it's working exactly the way it's, it, it should be working with the clerk's office because the clerk is obviously the, the clerk and the collector. And the whole point of having a clerk in the charter is that that's a control. And, and it's a separation of duties type thing. So they come in every day, they grab the balance reports and the cash and then they make sure that balances. So that's a separation, it's not the yard waste people doing, it's the clerk's office. And they also enter that into our financial accounting system, the Navoline system. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. So I want, I wanted to point that out. And that's pretty much it. I, that's it. And, and the, the Auditee Sanitation Department has agreed with, with all the findings and they're currently implementing remedial procedures. And I'll report those all back to you when they're, when they're done.
Thank you, Mr. Pulos. We will now go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There is one comment. I will unmute him now. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, 511 Ashland Avenue. And if you listen to Mr. Pulos where he said the yard waste disposal went from 21 to 63, and I think I heard him say it went down about 56. Either way, you're talking about a $40 per ton difference times 10,000 tons is $4,000. And as I mentioned at a previous meeting, one of the options instead of paying to have yard waste removed, is to go into private, public-private partnership with a paper wood processing company. You purchase the software site, you put your marine on the south side, you put your yard waste facility on the north side, you put in your private partnership. And instead of paying someone to get rid of the yard waste, you can earn some revenue. So I would recommend that you authorize the city manager to authorize Karen Lemus to begin looking at possibilities of that aspect. Instead of us paying to get rid of stuff, we get paid for them to take it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to make it clear because Mr. Delakis brings up a good point. We always have staff, our planning, our city manager looking for as many big pieces of property we can to have multi-use, including a third boat ramp with all the other great amenities that Mr. Delakis worked out. So plannings are always on it and we hope we can bring some, an item or property in the future for the community. We're going to go to Commissioner Comments. Vice Mayor Colianis, your light was on first.
So Billy, why are you making fun of your mom? I carry a couple of checks with me all the time.
I figured you did.
You gotta be ready, you gotta be prepared. So anyways, let me, I think you answered my, my question in the last couple of comments. When, when you do these reports and you find either, you know, internal control weaknesses or some other deficiencies and you make these recommendations, do you follow up to see whether they're enacted or do you work with the city manager? How does, how does the process work?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, usually I, I have the Auditee fill out a, oh, what do I call it? A, like an action plan type document. And then I usually, I don't, I don't, I don't send it to the board here. I usually send it when I do updates, like I update you guys every, you know, month or whenever. I usually put any updates to audits in those memos that I send you all. So right now, there's none outstanding.
So like these, these suggestions you have or these observations and recommendations, you will follow up with those?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all, that's all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther, your light was on next?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your, appreciate your, 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 your presentation. The two things that, that stuck out to me, well, one major one is we, is obviously that the, you know, cash and checks. I don't think anybody should be handling cash besides the, besides the, you know, clerk's office for obvious reasons. And the one area that this city has made waves in the past decade for getting to be with the times and high tech, I still do think, and this pointed out, that we need to make sure anywhere we have an interaction with the public where they have to pay, they should have the option to, to pay by card. And that's fine if they got to pay the merchant fee, that happens a lot these days. But to, 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 to just accept cash and checks, I think is, is just, is just a necessary burden and opens up the, the, the opportunity for problems. So hopefully that's going to be remedied and as well, it might help the people driving off. But if, if we have legitimate people driving off, like more than a, you know, a handful, like that's, that's theft. I'm sorry, like.
Illegal dumping.
Yeah. It's not fair to everyone else that abide by the rules and pays. So I know this city is covered in cameras. So if it ever happens and it's, you know, feasible and it's more than a few bucks, like, we definitely need to pull the footage and, and, and like pursue that because that's not fair to, though, to everyone else that abides by the rules. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Billy, for the presentation. So if we didn't have you doing these audits and you brought out a few, how is it that we just constantly have contracts that the attorneys just don't get to see?
I don't know. There's a disconnect somewhere between when the board approves something and the contracts, you know, typed up, whoever, whether it's the vendor or whether we produce the actual physical contract. I, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's, it's probably just a convenience thing, but I just, auditors always look to try to mitigate risk, right? And to me, that's just not having an attorney review something and signing it without having an attorney review it is just a risk that you don't have to take. And I know we're not shy about using the city attorney. So I don't know why we would be shy about them having to review a, a, a legal binding document. And I, and, and it's, like I said, it's the third time I've mentioned this and it's always the contracts that are really thin. I mean, this, the, the contract with Veranza Group, if you take away, you know, the pricing structure and the bid and the board and all that, all the, the nonsense that's in it, you know? The actual contract clauses, it's only two pages long. My employment contract, I think, is six or seven pages long. And I, I'm not an attorney, but I read a lot of contracts doing this and I can see a few clauses that should be in there and they're not in there. And I think, man, I just, I hope nothing ever happens because the city's going to be in a really tight spot. I mean, you know, the, you know, civil courts aren't, you know, perfect, but I tell you, I've, I've been involved with lawsuits before and, and it's not fun. And even if you have a black and white, airtight contract, sometimes it still doesn't go your way. So, you know, you want to have a tight contract, something that's, it's tight as possible so you don't leave it up to some judge to make the decision. And if an attorney's not reviewing it, then we're, we're taking undue risk that we shouldn't be taking. So I, I, I wish I had an answer for you. I, I don't know, I just.
Here's the other thing I'd like to ask.
Sorry, where you, where you currently, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yep. So what I'd like to do is see that we get and across the board, all the department heads to find out if there's any contracts currently not approved by the attorney. Because truthfully, I don't want to sit up here and hear down the road that we haven't more of these. So that was that question. I don't know if that would be up to you or the department heads, but I would like to make sure that we do have attorney approval on all the current contracts that we have.
Oh, yeah, that would, that would be, that'd probably be a procurement thing. I mean, I can follow up if you'd like. I mean, I.
So the, the other thing that I had is there, the people that are not paying and, and, you know, just leaving. You didn't differentiate between residents or non-residents, right?
That's, that's another issue. I didn't, I didn't put that down. The data is kind of my hard luck, of course. There was actually two sets of data. They got a new scale system about two-thirds of the way through the year. And I looked at FY 24, so I actually had two sets of data. The, the, the most recent data was the, the cells were filled in, but there was, there's no consistency, consistency to it. The old data is, there's a lot of pieces missing. In fact, there was only, I think there was 91 voids and only five of them had any reason codes. I don't know why they were avoided. Because the new data actually had reason codes there. So I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that a lot of the days incomplete, so I, I don't know. I, I, it's not, yeah, it's just not there.
Well, being, this is something that's probably been going on for a while. So I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with putting cameras there and electronic gates and whatnot. But truthfully, that, unless it's enforced.
Right.
You know, otherwise people are just donating us licenses. Um, you know, otherwise people are just donating us licenses and taking them. And that's just unacceptable. So that's why I asked the question about the residents, because if it's a resident thing and they're not paying their water bill, they get the water turned off.
Right.
If it's a resident that's putting something out here and and depositing, uh, refuge and, um, and they're the ones running away, then we have to act and, you know, possibly go to see about putting a lien, um, out there or whatever form we can do to get paid. I agree with Commissioner Banther's comment about having the credit card. Um, because just the the goodwill that we've had to put a driver's license as a, as, as a collateral is not working. So we need to make sure that we can, you know, just like when you go out and you rent the car and they charge you two hundred dollars to start or whatever it is. I mean, we can see that they have X amount of, uh, so I would like to see the credit card or we should even allow them to do the dump.
Right, right.
Uh, it it's silly to have this the way it is. I don't think, you know, to put an electronic gate, if they really wanted to, they could drive through the gate. And what are you going to do, chase them?
Exactly.
You know, so it it's, we have to not be ripped off, just like we don't want to rip off anybody as well.
Agreed, and and what you could do too, within, there's a, there's a, uh, a row, so to speak, or, uh, an item where you put, uh, this is where standard operating procedures come in. If you look at, it'll say like type of vehicle. And one operator will put, you know, Chevy truck, the next operator will put, you know, Billy Pullos. Next person will put in, depending on who's doing it, they'll put, you know, uh, Eisner M. So there's no consistency in it. So number one, they need consistency in that so we know exactly who it is, what they're driving. And then you could also put like a little code like R for resident or, you know, O for outsider or something, whatever. So there, there is ways to capture that data going forward. And, um, I'll be happy to work with the audit in, you know, and make, make some of the recommendations. So then we do know. I can tell you this, from looking at some of them, you can tell by the amounts, when you're looking at the data, you can tell that, okay, that's probably a resident. If it's like twenty dollars, okay, you know, that's the resident fee, right? But when it's eight, nine hundred dollars, yeah, it could be a resident, but probably a landscaper or something. No one's got that much yard waste, you know, it's like, so you can kind of tell by just the numbers where they're probably a resident or probably not, but it's not definitive. But we could certainly change the coding to where we can capture that information going forward.
But what I, what I don't want to have is duplicate fifteen licenses from the same landscaper who just keeps coming and donating us driving licenses for the cost of his nine hundred dollar drop off. So that was my, that was my only question.
Thank you.
I'm kind of done.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner DiDonato?
Uh, yeah, I, first of all, I just want to thank you for your report. Uh, and then reiterate a couple of things that have been said. I certainly agree with, uh, Commissioner Banther, who spoke about, uh, the cash and where it should be. I I've always felt that it should be only in one spot, at the clerk's office. Uh, that's number one. Number two, uh, talking about the people who are leaving, I think the procedure needs to be certainly dotted and crossed the I's and T's to see that maybe they pay first rather than allowing that that abuse. Uh, and I, the other question I had was Commissioner Colianis asked, uh, is, it's great to have the reports, but if we don't have this implemented, then we aren't doing our job. So I'd like to see that follow up, so, and and maybe later the results of how that's that's helped.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pullos, for the presentation. Yeah, I think we're all in agreement, we want to see what this, uh, uh, dump and ditch thing is. I think it's illegal dumping, but I don't, I don't know. Um, honest, and, um, I was on the commission when we, when we approved that contract back in twenty twenty three. It was the only contractor that bitted on it. There was nobody else who bid on it. It was about four hundred, hundred thousand dollars a year with the, with the increases. So, uh, in the future, you know, people got to bid and that'll help us out and that'll help us be a little bit more competitive. Um, I agree with the cash debit situation. I think that we should be able to take a certain amount of cash, a small, you know, if it's a ton or two, these people are dropping off and ends up, even a hundred and eighty dollars is a lot of money. But, you know, one ton for some of these smaller businesses, if we could somewhat remain at cash, that'd be good because they do operate it. But those bigger ones, they're, you know, their business, their biggest expenses are dumping fees. And yeah, they would definitely like that to come out of their, uh, checking accounts for the business, you know? So as opposed to giving all that cash to, uh, the city hall. So absolutely, please consider it. Um, if there's any way to, if we get a new contract in the future, it's cheaper to potentially lower our costs for us to consider. And a- as we mentioned, just look at a couple of things as we review our contracts just to make sure they look, uh, that they're set. Is there, is there a report or maybe just a follow up that really doesn't even need a presentation that can come back to us and like, uh, just see how results are going after like three, four months maybe or? Perfect. With that said, now we'll take a, the chair will entertain a motion to approve and accept the audit of the Public Works Sanitation Division.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes.
We are now going to item eleven or, um, item twelve, consideration of attorney services and change commission meeting dates to accommodate. We have City Manager Charles Rudd?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is actually, um, needs to be updated. We did receive the resignation letter from the Dickman firm and they've agreed to help with the transition and make sure that's as smooth as possible. So tonight, we really just need to vote on changing the meeting dates to the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. That would be starting in March.
Thank you. Okay, and we will now go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? There is, stand by. Zoom, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. As far as this particular item, if you go back and look at the attorney bills, you'll see it's been due to have, if you go and look at Mr. Salzman's bills, originally he was hired for litigation and he did all the charter review stuff and there's other things in there that he's been handling. So it makes perfect sense to have a more local firm now that you add additional attorneys to assist. I think that's perfectly reasonable and actually more efficient for staff, uh, to be able to have one attorney's firm to rely on. And as far as changing the meeting date, we've been flexible in the past in doing that. So as a personal person who follows meetings, second and fourth, it's not a problem. But again, I would also recommend that on months where you have the fifth Tuesday, you have some work sessions to hash out some of the other items that can be solved on a work session other than a regular four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Are there any other Zoom comments? There are no more raised hands at this time. Thank you. Vice Mayor Colianis, your light was on first.
Yeah. Uh, I'm definitely in favor of moving the meetings to the second and fourth to accommodate Mr. Salzman's, uh, schedule. Uh, I am going to ask that the swearing in ceremonies be kept on April first. Um, one is we've advertised some of this in advance. Um, on a personal note, I've got family that is coming in from up north. Um, and they've already made travel arrangements. And, um, also, you know, the swearing in ceremonies have always been, um, very, very short meetings. Um, so that, you know, we can go out with our families after the meeting, go have dinner, whatever, especially if you have, uh, guests coming in. And, um, this will allow us to have a full, uh, full meeting on the eighth without having to, uh, waste any time on the, uh, on the perfunctory, uh, swearing in and speeches and all that stuff. So, uh, I'm in favor of the second and fourth, but I do want to keep the ceremony on the first. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I, I, I too am in favor of, of this. In fact, history shows that we changed it once, the last time was to accommodate, uh, Mr. Trask. And, uh, so I don't see a problem with changing. I I do want to take this time to thank, uh, the Attorney Dickman's firm for stepping in when, when we actually needed that. And and I welcome the, the full return of, of Salzman, Dr. Our, our attorney Salzman, and appreciate the, the fact that, uh, we will have some more, some better clarifications forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, uh, ob- ob- obviously in full support. I, I questioned this two attorney process from the beginning. It's just, you know, I realize it was a temporary situation for, for certain reasons, but it's, I'm glad we're going to one firm. Um, I realized last week I might have a conflict on April first. It was booked before I got back on the board. I'm going to try and get it out, get out of it, but I I I might not be able to. Um, it's a big meeting for a client, I'm going to try and get somebody else in, 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 in the, my brokerage to cover it. But if not, I'll have to work with the city manager on that for the nuances of that. And depending when it is too, I mean, if we're going to have it at, I don't know if you want to have it at like a different time because we're not having an actual meeting. But, you know, I don't want, I don't want to move anything too much because of me. I'm going to do my best to, to get somebody else to cover the meeting for me. But in the event I can, I'll just have to work with the city manager as far as.
April first?
I understand, April fools, yes.
You're swearing in, sir.
I know, that's what I'm trying, well, I, I got sworn in on, on like a Monday at eight AM before. So I, you know, I'm just saying, I would not, I'm going to do my very best, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I'm, here's how I look at it. We have a situation in which we have a city attorney who's coming in. Um, I don't like, I don't think we should have three regular BOC meetings. I actually had plans as well for, to do something that following weekend. And so, um, I, I think we're going to have the, I don't want to support the ceremony being on that first, April first, when we have our, if we're going to be the second and fourth Tuesdays, then we're going to switch to the second and fourth Tuesdays. We're not going to have three meetings just to accommodate the one ceremony and then potentially not have Commissioner Banther there for April first. So, um, you know, arrangements can be made and changed. And as far as sending an email, we could just notify the board or the county, this is what we're doing. And, uh, we're changing the fourth, the meetings back to the second and fourth Tuesdays, which would be April eighth. So I'm not looking at, to do that so we can have three regular board session meetings when traditionally the first board meeting is nothing but a ceremony and there's really no agenda items besides appointments of, uh, position boards. So I, I get a sick to, if we're going to move second and fourth Tuesdays, then the ceremony will be April eighth and that's what I'm going to support.
I'm going to make a motion that we, um, accept, um, the item twelve, um, consideration of attorney services and change commission meetings to second and fourth. I'm also going to incorporate in there that the swearing in ceremony be on April first as it has originally been planned for, for months and months. So.
I say, yeah.
There's a second. Well, as I said, I'm not going to support it. I see there's items that have come up and, you know, we all have to support it and run by the second and fourth like we were sit there and told upon. So Commissioner Banther?
I, I just, you know, um, obviously, again, I, you know, fairly confident I can get someone to cover for myself, uh, though I'm pretty sure, but I don't want nothing moved because of me. I don't sense that why that's there tonight. I also don't want us, I also want us to try like, okay, like right now, if we were betting people, we can, we can, we can count the votes here, right? Like, it's not hard to do, right? But I, you know, there's no, I don't want us to go into a vote with, you know, I mean, I know we have vice mayor situation where you have family coming into town. It's obviously important and that was pre-booked, totally understand. Um, uh, Mayor, what, what, though, i- if you don't mind me asking, uh, you know, what is, is your objection just because of it ju- it would just be a third meeting or efficiency or schedule or what? How can we help bridge this gap?
Well, I, you know, I mean, I just think we're, you know, the first meeting of the, of the meet, of the year is going to be the swearing in, it's going to be the swearing in. We're not going to change everything and then have two additional regular session meetings when traditionally the first meeting is the swearing in ceremony. So if that's the case, that's what we're going to do. But now you guys are tying me into another Tuesday that's, you know, I got to make arrangements for as well. So, um, that's where I'm going with that. And, uh, like I said, we're either going to do so, second and fourth, like our charter tells us to agree with rules or back to the first and third. And I'm not just trying to accommodate for that one day. So we can all make accommodations and go for there. So no further comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
No.
Okay, we will now go to ordinance and resolutions. We have item thirteen, resolution two zero two five dash one eight, ratification of executive orders two zero two five dash one two and two zero two five dash one four, extending, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Helene. City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Sure. Twenty twenty five eighteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to extending the declaration of local state and emergency to the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five and ratifying executive order twenty twenty five fourteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash one eight.
So moved.
Second.
There are no further comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Sorry. Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes.
Item fourteen, resolution two zero two five dash one nine, ratification of executive orders two zero two five dash one three and two zero two five dash one five, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Milton.
Twenty twenty five nineteen, ratifying executive order twenty twenty five thirteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to February eighteenth, twenty twenty five and ratifying executive order twenty twenty five fifteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash one nine.
So moved.
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yeah.
Mayor Colias?
Yes.
Item fifteen, resolution two zero two five dash one six, authorizing reappointment of a temporary part-time staff position of senior administrator and providing for an effective date of March seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, City Attorney, can you please read the resolution title?
Sure. Twenty twenty five sixteen, authorizing reappointment of a temporary part-time staff position of senior administrator and providing for an effective date of March seventh, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash one six.
So moved.
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes.
Uh, item sixteen, resolution two zero two five dash twenty, support of a Pinellas County grant application for the elevation of traffic signal cabinets through Pinellas County and in the city of Tarpon Springs. And, um, City Attorney, can you please read, read the resolution?
Twenty twenty five twenty, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, support of a Pinellas County grant application for the elevation of traffic signal cabinets through Pinellas County and in the city of Tarpon Springs, providing for an effective date here too.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash twenty.
So moved.
Second.
There are no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis? Mayor Colias?
Yes. Yes.
Item seventeen, which is the final item of the night, which is resolution two zero two five dash one seven, ratification of executive order two zero two five dash one one, allowing for an extension to connect to the city's public sewer system due to the state of local emergency. City attorney, can you please just read the resolution?
Twenty twenty five seventeen, allowing for an extension to connect, connect the city's public sewer system due to the state of local emergency for Tarpon Springs from Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton and providing for, um, an effective date hereof.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash one seven.
So moved.
Back.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes.
Okay, and this concludes the regular session agenda. We will now go to board and staff comments. Uh, major Mathis?
None.
Thank you. City attorney, Glenn Atsis?
Just wanted to say it was a pleasure being here and seeing so many familiar faces. And on behalf of the firm, we look forward to serving the city of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Attorney Glenn Atsis. You were great today. We appreciate your company. Um, city clerk, Ms. Jacobs?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Rudd?
Yeah, just to, I sent you an email. I'll be attending the, uh, accreditation hearing in St. Augustine on Thursday with the police department. And I'm gonna take opportunity to, uh, attend the Soul Food Festival in Crescent City while I'm there, so I'll be back, uh, Sunday evening. Bring some soul food for us.
Thank you, sir. Uh, commissioner comments? Commissioner Banther?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DiDonato?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Just want to thank Ms. Glit Atsis and, uh, she's been delightful here and welcome to the club.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Kulianis?
So this past week, um, the, uh, city attorney, I mean, the city manager and myself, we, uh, toured the metropolitan ministries and we saw it, just the amazing work they're doing. Um, you know, they are not only feeding people, they're helping them up. They are, um, they have classrooms there for them to get their GEDs. They have, uh, they're assist them with finishing if they have needed. There was one, uh, they gave us an example of, of someone, a single mom with a couple of kids who was three hours short of getting her RN. And they took her in and they helped her out and they got her across the finish line. And now she's, um, you know, making productive, uh, person and she's able to support her children. So, um, it was just really great to see that in action. So, um, and that's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanna tell we got a few events this weekend. We have, um, the Sunset Hills PTA Color Run that starts at eight thirty in the morning at Sunset Hills Elementary. We also have the annual City Toucha Truck and open house. You'll see, uh, city staff with all the different vehicles that, um, kids can come out and see with a lot of different gifts and toys too. And so hopefully everyone will enjoy that as well.
Mayor, the, uh, chief had to change.
That color run, there is a change to that.
Oh, please tell me.
They rescheduled the date. That was today. I don't have the date with me, but it's, it's gonna be later on in March.
Okay, so the, the PTA Sunset Hills Color Run has been canceled. Um, and other than that, just want, uh, thank everyone for being here tonight. The meeting is adjourned at eight oh two PM.
You know, it's close. I used to be good at predicting that, but not anymore. I used to be good.